Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the September 10th, 2025 Saldana City Council Meeting. If you'd please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, the United States of America and interior republic for which we stand, one nation, under common, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carrie?
Present.
Chilton?
Present.
Hutchings?
Here.
Nelson?
Councilmember Nelson has an excused absence this evening.
Thank you. Whackler?
Present.
Parker?
Yes, I'm here.
Kincaid?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Moving on, may I have a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda? Councilmember Carrie?
Thank you. I move that we approve the agenda and the consent agenda as presented before us.
Thank you, Councilmember Hutchings, for the second. Are there any changes to the agenda or consent agenda? Seeing none, will the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Action memorandum 2025-015, May Oral Appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Action memorandum 2025-016, Request for an Excused Absence from the September 24th, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting, Mr. Chilton. Action memorandum 2025-017, Confirming the City of Saldana Student Representative Appointment. Action memorandum 2025-018, Approval of Appointment to the Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District, Board of Directors, Sponsored by the Mayor. Action memorandum 2025-019, Request for an Excused Absence from the September 10th, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting, Mr. Nelson. Action memorandum 2025-020, Approval of the 2025 Election Officials, Canvas Board and Absentee Voting Officials for the October 7th, 2025 Regular Election, Sponsored by the City Clerk. That is your consent agenda. Oh, and the minutes. Hold on. August 27th, 2025, City Council Meeting Minutes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any remote, are there any public comments on any of the items just read by the clerk? Or is there anyone online, any remote attendees wishing to speak? All right, thank you. Having no one wishing to speak, the approval of the agenda and consent agenda are back before the council. Are there any objections to approving the agenda and consent agenda? Seeing none. Moving on, public comments and presentations. Are there any members from the public who would like to speak on any items that are not appearing on the agenda? Anyone online? All right. Assembly and legislative report. I see no one from the assembly or legislature here. Anybody online? All right. Public, moving on, we have our first of eight public hearings tonight. First one is ordinance 2025-015, Amending the Saldana Municipal Code, Chapter 1710, Zoning Code by Establishing a New Subchapter 1710-268, Riverfront Mixed Use District, and Amending Sections of Saldana Municipal Code Title 1, Title 15, and Title 17 to Establish Standards for the Riverfront Mixed Use Zoning District. We have, already have a motion on the floor from our June 11th meeting to enact. At this time, I'd like to get a report from the administration.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to ask our Planning and Zoning Director to speak to this ordinance.
Thank you. Going to have Johnny pull up the slides for this presentation. Brief slide, so. So as noted, this ordinance is just to re, to create a new subchapter, mostly just creating a new zoning district within our code. And this is really initiated and from the riverfront plan that was adopted as one of the key implementation is to rezone. So really, the key highlight of this ordinance is making certain amendments that are in loop, corresponding with the Riverfront Mixed Use Minor Fence Sign Code, new subchapter. And really, the crux of it is, are highlighting these things. When it comes to this riverfront mixed use, and I'm not going to go into the details of the land use, but highlighting the key things, relevant big changes that I think would be affecting the area. You see this map right here is where the proposed rezone is, and it will be reviewed further in the next ordinance. But exclusion of incompatible uses. And a lot of it is the automotive related services and sales that are typically allowed in the commercial zone, which where you see yellow is where commercial are. And right now, this whole area where you're seeing red, where is the proposed RMU, it's all commercial. So this area has now been reduced to 50 acres approximately. And heavy industrial, a lot of discussion is really seeing the exclusion of storage yards. And furthermore, low density residential. And so those are the key highlights that are being excluded, particularly where it's allowed right now in the commercial district. And then allowing certain conditional uses that you don't see, or is maybe permitted by right, and we want a little bit more discretion within this zone. And some of it is light manufacturing. PNZ has already made the recommendation to allow light manufacturing. And the intent of this is mainly to see like a small scale artisan manufacturing with their retail and commercial component. Another thing that I should mention that what also falls in light manufacturing is your microbreweries. So something like the breweries that we see or the meery that we're going to see in this area would actually fall under light manufacturing zone. And so that was another consideration of why we wanted to allow this as a conditional uses in this area. Because we see that on that scale, it's compatible. And further, another one that we've changed from the original with the outreach was recreational lodges to allow that within this area and multifamily as well. And then the other key change is modify off-street parking. And I didn't include the table, but you saw the table during the work session. A lot of it is decreasing the parking almost in half in this area, hoping to anticipate that we don't see a lot of pay parking lot, asphalt parking lot that we hardly see. It takes up a lot of developers' expense. And so we wanted to reduce that to modify it, hoping to offset it with on-street parking, which again, the on-street parking would only be permitted in this zone specifically, not citywide. And then parking design standards, we saw about curb cuts, how many driveways, where to place the parking on the lot itself. So these are the key highlights of this zone for now. And then another component, as well as the building height. PNZ discussed about it a lot, but we decided to off, to postpone it at a later date with further time. So moving with this RMU is being kept at where the commercial zone is allowed 48 feet until further evaluation by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Other than that, that really summarizes this zone. Land use table in your packet really shows the difference in comparison. And I'm happy to answer any questions your council may have. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Are there any members of the public who would wish to speak on the item at this time? Seeing none, is there anyone online? Okay. With that, we will close the public hearing on this ordinance and bring it back to council. Council comments. Councilmember Hutchings?
You know, I have pored over this for hours, and I am still not pleased with the way this ordinance reads. I think there are too many issues that we need to take one step at a time. I mean, right now, we have nobody that's going to buy this property and do this. And it is precluding people, particularly your realtors, from selling some of this property because they have no idea what's going to happen as far as zoning is concerned. And we are a small city. We live on our sales tax. We have very low property taxes, and we have been very lucky with our fieldhouse and with our ice rink that we've been able to maintain all of these issues. We have roads because we have three schools, or is it four, within our, within our boundaries. We have the hospital. We have numerous medical facilities. We have the borough. We have the school district, and we have the post office. We're responsible for all of the roads to get there. And I realize that sometimes we're able to get a grant here and there. But basically, we, the people that live in this city, are the ones that are responsible. And the fact that we're wanting to remove businesses that provide a lot of sales tax into our city, I think is unjust to the property owners in this city. So I think we really, really need to take a very strong look at this. Because I sit here and I look at, you're not going to get sales tax revenue from museums and art galleries to the tune of what you're getting from a service station. And right now, we have three service stations on this run, two of them you can hardly get into. And the one by the park has a light that goes into it. And I think that's really important because you don't have that congestion because they can turn with the light and exit at the light going either right or left. And I think that this is another thing that we really need to think about. The other item that I saw in the ordinance was the mention of handicapped. We didn't want any kind of handicap facility. And I look at Riverside Assisted Living, there are a lot of handicapped people in there. There have been, I would say, over a million dollars spent on this facility to bring it up to a code that is, that people want to stay there. They want to put their family members there. And I think that we're, we're doing ourselves a disservice by saying you can't do these things. Let's have parks and playgrounds. Let's have museum and galleries. But they don't generate income. And to say also that a handicapped person isn't going to be welcomed into this area because that's how I read this, I think is extremely sad. Because what else do they have when they are housebound but a beautiful view of the river to keep them going? So I just, I will not be able to support this ordinance at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Other councilmember comments? If I could at this time, I'd like to pass the gavel to Councilmember Chilton because I do have some amendments.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Chair Chilton. As I mentioned during, during the work session, I've, I've taken a lot of time to read this ordinance, do an, do an analysis, and based on that, am proposing some amendments. And my First Amendment, number one, I would move for enactment, and after that, I would speak to it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Carey.
If I, if I might, if I might speak to it. So it, I, in reading the purpose and intent, it's deleting words like context sensitive, diverse, and to a wide range of community members. We want to be open and welcoming. It doesn't, we can be context sensitive without have, actually having to say that. We already provide for a wide range of community members. So, so why are we saying that? I mean, it's kind of like we're targeting a wide range. No, we're targeting all of the community, not just specific people. So with that, I would ask councilmembers to please support Amendment Number One.
Back to the council, any comments? Okay, hearing none, let's call for the vote.
Whackler?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Thank you. And with that, I'd like to pass the gavel back to Vice Mayor Parker.
She's got several more.
I, I, I think I have six more. So I would move for the enactment of Amendment Number Two, which again is deleting some language in this section.
Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Carey. Discussion, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So in this section, it would, the Amendment Number Two would, under Number Nine, it would delete and recreation centers. So recreational facilities that would be authorized would be arcades, billiards, bowling alleys, skating rinks, racket and handball carts. We just opened up a big fieldhouse, and we have an ice arena. So why are we going to be encouraging recreation centers in this area? And then also, under Number 11, it would delete the word theaters. So I would ask for council's support on Amendment Number Two.
Back to the council, discussion. I do have a question on this relating to recreation centers. Would that potentially apply to youth centers? I know we've had some discussion about the need to have a teen center here in town. And I think a district like this that's walkable, has shops, parks, would be an ideal location for a youth teen center. I just don't want to see us put into a corner where we can't allow one there because of this potential amendment. So I guess that's a question of the city manager or planning zoning director if that could be answered.
Planning and zoning director, thank you.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Chilton. So, yes, a recreational center is interchangeable with youth center. Because in our definition, recreational or youth center means a building, structure, athletic playing field or playground, one, run or created by a local government or the state to provide athletic, recreational, leisure activities per person under 21 years of age, and two, operated by a public or private organization licensed to provide shelter, training, or guidance for those under the age of 21.
Got it. Thank you. I guess my comments on this would be, I thank the Vice Mayor for bringing forward all these amendments. I, to Councilwoman Hutchings' point, I mean, there is definitely some work that we should consider with this ordinance we're reviewing tonight. I appreciate that we're looking at all these individual pieces. And most of these amendments that we're going to work through here, I do support this particular one, Number Two. I do have concerns about just because, well, number one, the negation of the ability to have youth 13 center in that area. I think that would be a wonderful location for one. And then also, I believe if you look back at the Riverfront Redevelopment Plan, I mean, a lot of the goal there that we're trying to establish is a walkable, shoppable district, a people, a place where people want to go and spend time along the river and see our shops. And I think like a small artisan theater could definitely be an attribute to the area. You know, go get dinner by the river, do some shopping, maybe catch a movie. You know, a single facility with maybe a single, maybe two screens. Obviously, we don't want a Sinumplex with like 10 screens there, that wouldn't fit. So this might warrant a little bit more work. At this time, I don't support Amendment Number Two. Vice Mayor Parker, thank you.
Thank you. A question, if I might, through the city manager to the planning director. The definition is for recreation center, recreation and youth centers?
Unfortunately, the way our definition is defined, it includes as both. Referencing one is the same as the other. Unfortunately, this, it doesn't have a standalone. So recreational center, recreational or youth center are one and the same under our code. And really, that definition came about when we did the marijuana license to create it in a bucket to provide the buffering of what that looks like.
If I can follow up, I would clarify that I would support what Amendment Number Two is trying to do if we could somehow refine the language to split apart the ability to have youth 13 centers there and theaters with maybe one or two screens, but no more. So this might require a little bit more work later, but as it's presented, it's not something that I would support. Is there any additional council discussion on the proposed amendment number two? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Carey?
No.
Chilton?
No.
Hutchings?
No.
Whackler?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Four no, one yes.
Okay, Vice Mayor, I would like to do a motion for Amendment Number Three.
Amendment Number Three is taking and redefining, eliminating from the list of facilities that need conditional uses and structures. And I would move for enactment and then speak to it.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Carey. Back to the Vice Mayor.
Thank you. When you look at the ordinance under Item Number Seven, recreational facilities, for outdoor recreational facilities, it identifies those facilities that could get a conditional use permit include golf courses, sports field, and sports arena. And this proposed amendment would eliminate those. And the recreational outdoor facilities that would be okay within this area would be miniature golf. Golf courses require an extensive amount of land. We have sports fields just down the street, along with a sports arena. So why would we, in this 50 acres, be also saying, we're going to put in more sports fields and a sports arena down here, even though we have one just down the street? So I would ask for your support on this.
Thank you. Back to the council for discussion. Are there any additional comments from councilmembers on this proposed amendment? Councilmember Whackler?
So just to clarify, kind of what we were talking about last time. This is an example of those things, not an exhaustive list. Is that correct? Or is this a specific list of items that would be allotted with a conditional use permit?
Is your question to the Vice Mayor or to?
I think definition to the planning commissioner.
Thank you, Councilmember Whackler, for that question. So when it comes to the way the zoning ordinance is laid out, how it's listed here is an exhaustive list. It's supplemented by the land use table. But at any point, there is a conflict between this section written versus the land use table. This section was actually superseded.
To follow up if you, if I may. So this is saying recreational facilities outdoor, is that going to? The only thing we would have allowed outdoor recreational wise is miniature golf. Does this affect parks in any way, shape, or form? Or like us adding to parks or other recreational activities supported by the city through parks? Like if you were to add disc golf or anything along those lines?
Thank you, Councilmember Whackler, for that question. Usually, you know, it can't list everything. I think that was probably your original question. We always look at what's listed and what is similar in scale, bulk, impact. And if, you know, the interpretation could be made, like something low key, like in miniature golf, the amount of people coming in and out, maybe a small scale disc golf could be approved under this, the way it's defined or what's listed. It doesn't always help when you list this very specific uses, and it's not an exhaustive list of everything. But usually, that's how interpretation is made. And if one cannot fit within the list, then interpretation can be punted to the commission to determine if it should be a conditional use or not. And then I'll probably elaborate on why the list was included golf course, sports field, and sports arena. Because the order of the resolution was, we looked at the RMU district, and the original scale or scope included Saldana Creek Park. And so we didn't, as staff recommendation, we didn't want to limit what park can do. So we kind of kept similar to parks and rec zoning uses. And when the map was reduced in size, you know, this has already been adopted by the commission. So this is kind of where the discrepancy is.
I'd also like to add to that, just the comment that I, I think I know where you're going with this. Your concern being that if the city wanted to establish a park potentially, because I know in the Riverfront Redevelopment Plan, there are a number of different uses we are looking at with some of the lots. You know, for example, where the RV park is, you know, there's the potential like, okay, do we put a market hall there? Do we put another park? My understanding would be that if the city ever did acquire additional land within this RMU zone, and we would like to establish another park, I suspect we would have the ability at that point in time to rezone a particular parcel or set of parcels to parks and recreation to match what we've zoned Saldana Creek Park to be. So I, I don't have any concerns about this precluding that. And Director Mitchell, please correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you are correct. And I am just looking at the land use table itself. We do have a separate line item for parks and day use playgrounds, and that's permitted in the RMU.
Beautiful. Councilmember Hutchings, I believe you had a comment.
Yes, I do. I'm sitting here looking at, we're going to give conditional use permits to daycare centers, guide services. I think we have one guide that's on that main line that is absolutely embarrassing right now, sitting next to Wells Fargo. I really don't want to see something like that in this area. We're talking about a walking area with some nice shops and restaurants. I don't see where light industry, guiding services, daycare centers meet this criteria. So I will be voting against this amendment.
Vice Mayor, I would comment, you do have the ability to make an amendment, scheme amendment, if you'd like to modify some of those. Okay. Thank you. Are there any additional council comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
No.
Whackler?
Yes.
Carey?
No.
Chilton?
Yes.
And Kincaid, and I apologize for missing. And Kincaid, and I apologize for missing you.
Yes.
You have three yes, two no.
Motion fails. Or does it fail? It's a majority, but we still need four for amendments, don't we?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to amendment number four, Vice Mayor Parker, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you. Amendment number four would take and change the maximum building height from 48 feet to 25 feet. And I would move for enactment of amendment number four and then speak to it.
Thank you. Is there a second? Any second on this? Am I allowed to pass the gavel to second?
Yes.
Okay. Or do I have to pass it to second?
You do have to pass it.
Okay. I'm going to briefly pass the gavel to, thanks. I would like to second the motion for discussion. Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you. If I might, this is the one area where I've gotten more comments from members of the public than any other part of the Riverfront Development Mixed Use Zone Ordinance. And that they see 48 feet as too high. And particularly, as you're there, if you're putting up structures that are 48 foot high that are right next to the river, then everybody behind you is not going to get the river and is going to be blocking daylight hours. I could see a progression that as you move away from the river, you have higher structures, but putting tall structures down by the river is impeding that view of this majestic river that people come here to see and is a primary reason why we live here. And I, in looking at other codes for looking at sizes, that was where the 25 feet came from. It wasn't something I picked out of thin air. So I would urge you to support reducing maximum building height within the Riverfront Mixed Use Zone from 48 to 25 feet.
Thank you. Council comments? Councilman Whackler, I think, it'd be you.
Could I get some examples of existing structures and what heights there are? Does anybody know, say, Aspen, how tall that one is, Blazy? So I can get a reference.
Mr. Chair? I'm going to go.
Thank you. To the city manager.
We've been doing some research, and I'm going to ask our director to comment on it. The one structure that we have been unable to through any research is the Blazy Mall. We do know it is three stories. We do know that is for sure. We can get the building footprint, but not the height. But the director does have information on the other structures.
So I actually don't have it readily available, so my apologies. But yes, I tried to look up Blazy Mall. There was just nothing. I even tried to use an app, but it's just a little bit taller. If I can just have a few minutes to pull up the numbers for the other building, I don't have it right in front of me, but.
I do have a follow up, but you can take time to answer that question. To my understanding, the intent with this was kind of to guide a new area where the structure would include multi-use buildings, such as retail spaces on the bottom with housing on top, and maybe more up on the street. And then with it being less, as you get towards the river and maybe river walkways. My concern with limiting it to 25 feet, again, I'm not sure visually how much that is, is could that limit us for expanding into more mixed use buildings if no one can build above two stories? Are we going to get any additional housing projects built when you can't go above that? That is kind of a concern I have, but I'm not.
Councilman Kerry, you had a comment as well?
Your question, we're dealing with.
Any other comments? Councilman Hutchings?
Well, the comment I have is, most businesses are going to be a minimum of 12 feet on the ground floor, at least. Then you have your distance for your beams and whatever. And if you put housing on the upper floor, I can't imagine renting an apartment that is less than a 10-foot ceiling because it just feels too claustrophobic. And then you have a pitch of a roof, so I am opposed to 25. I think it's going to have to be 48. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd add my own comments that I do recognize the concern that we heard from a number of stakeholders during the last work session on this. And I think height is certainly something we should look at. I don't know if I'm comfortable immediately restricting it to 25 at this point in time, just because I'm not sure, I'm convinced that you're going to really increase any view of the river between a 25-foot filled building and a 48-foot building once you get back a little bit. And then additionally, I do also have concerns about our ability to limit housing. I know one of the main things I was excited about with the Riverfront Redevelopment Plan is the idea of mixed use housing, where we have businesses down below and little apartments above, and I would be concerned about that. But maybe we can find some kind of compromise where we maybe have some form of height restriction, whether it's 25 or something else closer to the river and maybe modified as we step back. But this is just another item that I think might take a little bit more work. So I'm not ruling it out, but I just don't know if I support it at this point in time. Vice Mayor Parker, did you have a comment to add to that?
I do. And when I wrote this up and sent it to the city manager and the city clerk, one of the things that I see is something that's progressive. So as you're down closer to the river, the structures are smaller. But as you move up on this south side of the highway, you could increase the height. So this is an area that definitely needs work. But again, I think having a 48-foot structure immediately adjacent to the Kenai River is going to preclude and harm those properties that are behind that.
And I would add to that, I agree. I do have concerns about a 48-foot structure right next to the river. I don't know if we want to limit throughout the entire district, and that's where I would think we might need to look at having a little bit of work on this.
So at this point, if I might, with the concurrence of the second, I would withdraw this amendment for now?
Okay. I have no concerns? Who was our second on this one again? Oh, thank you. Yes, I have no concerns. It's hard to keep track of these. Okay, so amendment number four is withdrawn. Moving on to amendment number five, Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you. Amendment number five deals with the off-street parking specifications. And there's a number of changes within there. The major one would be in off-street parking, where you've got to get in a parking agreement that's approved by the administrative officer. Right now, it says executed by all property owners, and I would change that to all adjacent property owners. And then in number five, parking access, right now, it allows for vehicle access to restricted, to one curb cut driveway per frontage. But then it goes on to say where a lot has in excess of 300 feet in frontage, an additional curb cut driveway is allowed. And I would, this amendment would delete that additional curb cut being allowed if there was an additional 300 feet. So I would move for enactment of amendment number five.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is there a second on the motion? Thank you, Mr. Kerry. Any additional discussion on the proposed amendment number five? Councilman Hutchings?
So I'm looking at the minimum parking places, and I'm trying to figure out how in the world a hotel or motel has one space for two rooms? Just asking, since everybody drives a car and they usually have two cars per room. And the other one is a residential dwelling with one space per unit? Husband and wife, what are they going to do? I mean, they don't have garages in these areas. The other thing is, is on the restaurants, I will tell you, I just had to increase my parking lot at Don Jose's to cover the existing parking requirements. And this is reducing them. I've got 30 some, and this is telling me, for the amount of square footage in my building, I'd only have to have 22. So where are all these people going to park? You cannot have enough off-street parking for this, so I am opposed to this one.
Thank you, Councilman Hutchings. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
No.
Whackler?
Clarify, this is not amending the parking space size.
Correct.
This is just amending those changes in number five and number three.
Yes.
Yes. Kerry?
No.
Chilson?
Yes.
Kincaid?
Yes.
You have three yes, two no. Motion fails.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to amendment number six, Vice Mayor Parker.
This is the last amendment, and this is changing some of the land uses that are allowed in the zoning district. And the first one is under commercial residential, as Councilmember Hutchings brought up, changing handicap from prohibited to conditional. It would change parking, commercial lot change from conditional to prohibited. It would change the recreational facility indoor from prohibited, permitted to prohibited. And then recreational facilities for golf courses, sports fields, and sports arenas, it would change from conditional to prohibited. And the same for theaters, from permitted to prohibited. And I would move for adoption of amendment number six.
Vice Mayor, is there a second?
Just for clarification, to the maker of the motion, did you want to include theaters as a prohibited use? And because that particular motion failed.
Okay, we can take that out.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, the motion on the floor for this amendment is, as we see presented in our packet, with the reduction of the line item for theaters, which remains status quo as it's in the original ordinance?
And the reduction, removal of recreation centers, change to that one.
Copy that. Okay. The motion has been made. Is there a second? Any second?
Just for clarification, all this is doing is ratifying what you've already looked at.
Excluding, we have not, we've discussed handicap, commercial residences, but we've not made any changes within the proposed ordinance at this time for handicap. So right now, handicap, other than those that are existing, would be permitted if this were to be adopted today.
So this is changing, this is expanding handicap access?
This would make it conditional.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, it's currently prohibited. Okay, so the motion's been made, it's been seconded, council discussion. Oh, Ms. Clerk.
Just for clarification, sorry. Amendment number three, which would have removed golf course, sports fields, and sports arenas, did have three yeses and two nos, however, it still failed. So we need to remove the changes to golf courses, sports fields, and sports arenas from the table.
So.
Which would leave only.
It would, it would still allow those to be applied for conditional use permit.
Correct.
I'll be applying for my golf course.
I believe, is that correct, Linda? Am I tracking? Yes, the only other one that would still be considered is the commercial lot that hasn't been discussed. So two things is the commercial residence handicap and the parking for a commercial lot. Those are the only two. Everything else has been discussed.
Okay, would you like me to read the motion as it currently stands?
Please do.
Okay, so to amend section 12, table one, summary of land uses, under commercial residences, handicapped would become a conditional use, and parking commercial lots would become prohibited. Correct, Linda? Got it.
Okay. And then all other line items remain status quo? Okay. Are there any additional questions on this? Okay, we have the motion made, the second, council discussion, Councilman Whackler, floor is yours. You could make an amendment to the amendment.
Correct.
I think it was Kerry or Whackler? I feel like it was Whackler. Yes, I think Whackler. Lots of motions tonight.
So my question is, it says parking and commercial lot, what happens to our parking down by Arby's and Napa?
It's grandfathered.
So the money that we spent will not be lost. How long is our lease on that?
Through the city manager?
Clarifying, you're asking about the Aspen parking lot and the city's lease of the Aspen parking lot? I believe that, wait, I don't know how long the lease is. It is a long-term lease. I'd have to look up the exact dates of it, but if I understand this correctly, that it would be still retained, the use would continue to be retained.
All that, and I vaguely recall it being a 20-year lease. It was a very.
I was going for 20 or 30, but I wasn't sure.
I feel like it was a 20-year lease.
And I'm sorry, I'm putting the director on the spot. I do believe that would be also a public parking lot versus a commercial parking lot because it is a lease to the city.
Correct. So the way it's defined, a commercial lot is a paid parking lot. So once you are charging people, it becomes a commercial lot. There's an exchange of monetary. So as long as we keep it as a public, the Aspen Creek under the city is allowed. And so that's the distinguishment. If someone comes in and do private commercial lot and it has to be paid for, that's how it's defined under the code.
Okay, thank you, Director Mitchell. Back to Councilman Hutchings.
So my question is then, if the city, like Seward, puts in a commercial lot, starts paying, charging for it, what happens?
I'll turn it back to Director Mitchell.
Thank you, Councilmember Hutchinson. So that wouldn't be allowed if this was to change from currently proposed as conditional to prohibited? Because if you move forward with this amendment, you're saying that's not allowed. So that wouldn't be an opportunity in the future of the city to decide to charge. Under the current conditional use, we would be continued to allow to do so in the future to change it to paid parking.
Just, I'll jump in there with clarification on that. Is there any delineation between for-profit charges and charges to maintain what we have? Because I think there's a very clear difference between a company that's trying to run a for-profit commercial parking lot versus a city that's doing it as a public service and just charging it up for upkeep?
Thank you, Councilmember Chilson. So the definition's not clear, it just says for compensation. So for any paid monetary, it doesn't say whether, you know, the intent behind it, but maybe we can redefine the code and defining it.
Do you want to continue?
So the question is, right now, it's a conditional use and we're changing it to prohibited, is that correct? Or ext?
Okay, Vice Mayor Parker?
This would be within that 50 acres within the mixed use zone only.
Right.
Not any other areas within the city.
So what, by making this change in amendment six, it's saying we can have that lot there or we cannot have that lot there? I know it's grandfathered, but. I know it's grandfathered, but.
We can have the lot there because it is a public, we're leasing it and using it as a public lot, not a commercial lot. And then, as the director said, then if we, basically, we could not do paid parking there because then it would become the commercial lot. But as, a couple of things, it would be grandfathered for one, and it is considered a public lot. Okay, thank you. May I just tag on there something too that just popped into my mind that we would, of course, research in after the lease twenty years from now? Then that may be a different scenario twenty years from now. We would hope it would continue to be a public lot, but something to look at twenty years from now.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you. So I look at, you know, the, this, this fifty acres that we're discussing tonight, what is the highest and best use of that property? And is putting in a paid parking lot the highest and best use? Or do I find another location for putting in a paid, asking, putting in a parking lot where I'm asking people to pay? I don't see this fifty acres as highest and best use being a commercial parking lot. And I know during the entire discussion we've had on the riverfront development plan, one of the discussions we had early on was taking the Davis Block property and turning that into a parking garage. Again, I don't see that as highest and best use for that, that property. And so that's why I propose that we take this from conditional to prohibited within this fifty acres that we're discussing tonight.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Whackler?
Does this in any way affect the ability for the city or private people to put in, say, paid parking spaces? We are talking about opening it up to street parking along those Egress roads. I see the potential in the future of, obviously, on-street parking usually develops after a few years into a pay structure. You know, this is a very different, I just, since we're talking about the future and it being, you know, twenty, fifty years down the road, maybe we should talk about, can you put up parking meters?
Thank you, Councilmember Whackler. In terms of parking meter, like on-street, you know, this is very specific to a parking lot. So on-street parking meters would be excluded from this. And then again, you know, you could have a lot. And this, again, all these uses are considered principal or primary uses on the lot. So if there's an oversized lot and there isn't another established principal use, potentially, a commercial lot, paid parking could coexist on the same lot itself. These uses, again, are as a standalone or being the principal use, can a commercial parking lot be allowed in this zone? Right now, conditional, potentially prohibited. So just want to kind of provide a little bit more clarity on that as well.
So follow up on that. You're saying if a smallish type apartment had a private parking lot underneath it, that they made a pay use. It's essentially, it's a retail and mixed-use, but it also happens to have a pay-to-park area that would not be prohibited.
Thank you for that follow-up question. Correct, as long as that parking lot associated with the retail is really a secondary accessory use, not a principal use.
Thank you. To the city manager? Okay, sure. Would five minutes be sufficient? Okay, let's go and take a five-minute adis. We're going to get the meeting going here in a minute again, so if everyone could take their seats, that'd be great. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and bring us back to order. We have before us amendment number six, which has been motioned, seconded. We have discussion ongoing. Is there any additional discussion on amendment number six? Any discussion? Okay, last opportunity. I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote on amendment number six.
Hutchings?
No.
Whackler?
I don't need discussion, but I just, I realized that I'm asking for clarification again. The only thing that we're approving right now is parking commercial lot and.
Handicap.
That's it.
And just to clarify, we're permitting handicap but removing parking?
Commercial.
Commercial.
Yes.
Okay.
That's your vote?
Yes. I know that was.
Carrie?
No.
Chilton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
You have three yes, oh, Kincaid?
Yes.
Three yes, two no, motion fails.
Are there any further amendments?
Okay. Hearing none, I would like to go ahead and pass the gavel back to Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Councilmember Chilton. Are there any additional comments on ordinance twenty twenty-five zero one five? Any other comments or amendments? Councilmember Chilton?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, we've had a lot of good discussion on this tonight. This is a tough one, you know. This is something that I know our team has put a significant amount of time and invested themselves into to get this here before us today, as well as the, the efforts of our planning zoning commission. This is kind of coming towards the culmination of the work that has been initiated through our riverfront redevelopment planning process, that document. We all know as part of that design, at some point, we intended to have some form of zoning change for this district because, you know, we've established goals for what we want to see happen with that riverfront development district. You know, I think we all agree that we would love to see a walkable, shoppable downtown district. And I, I do believe there are certain things that are not compatible with that dream. We want to see that dream happen. I don't want to see certain developments stomp on that. But to Councilman Hutchings' point, you know, we have an obligation to support our small businesses. You know, we operate our city on sales tax revenue. It is the majority of our revenue base. We should tread carefully when we are making changes that could potentially impact that. So I just, I have to consider this carefully when we're putting this before us tonight. I, I think there is a substantial amount of good here that we are considering with this ordinance. But there are certainly some things that are going to likely take a little bit more work. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize, we are down two members of this body, our mayor's out, Councilman Nelson is out. I know the previous meeting, Councilman Nelson has similarly expressed his opinion that this is not something we should necessarily rush. You know, it's something we should take our time on, and if we have to delay it, we should delay it and put in the work. And I support that stance. I would rather take the time to, you know, go back to the drawing board if we have to and make additional changes. I really appreciate the work that was brought forward tonight by Vice Mayor Parker to start trying to tackle some of this, and I think we should continue that. So to that end, I, I would like to ask staff, if I were to make a motion to postpone this, what would be a reasonable date that we should consider? And put that on the calendar and maybe consider some additional work, either in collaboration with our planning zoning department and/or the planning zoning commission, maybe a potential work session where we can do some deep dives and really kind of continue the work that was started here tonight by Vice Mayor Parker.
Chair?
Yes.
I am looking, excuse me, I'm looking at it, attempting to look at a twenty-twenty-six calendar here. And my recommendation would be that we postpone until February of twenty-twenty-six. I also would recommend, if you would like, a work session. You know, we do it prior to that meeting, or we could schedule a work session and then two weeks later have the ordinance back before you. Whichever mechanism you'd like to do, but I do think additional work session would be in order.
I wholeheartedly agree. Did you have a specific date in February? I missed that.
February tenth for the work session? Okay, February tenth for the work session and then February twenty-fourth to have the ordinance back before you.
Okay, so.
I, I'm so sorry.
Go ahead.
Also, I do, if it would be acceptable, I believe that would, sometime in February, it would be AML. And so we would have to look at those dates. So if the council would be amenable, we could set those as the dates. However, if there's a change, let you know, we'll bring it back to you because of the calendar.
So I, I wholeheartedly support the idea of a work session with this. My personal preference would be that the work session not coincide with the same day as the hearings, that we have the opportunity to evaluate the information, collaborate with staff on any potential changes that emerge following discussions there. So I would make a motion to postpone this ordinance until our February twenty-fourth meeting with the understanding that we will shoot to have a work session on February tenth. And these dates might potentially be changing at a later meeting if we see need. So, thank you.
Councilmember Carrie?
I certainly.
Are you seconding? Oh, Councilmember Whackler seconded. Councilmember Carrie?
Thank you. I certainly agree that this is a long first step, but that's appropriate. It's a living process. I would hope that if we're going to postpone, excuse me, as we move forward on this for, wait for five months plus, I would hope we would make a very concerted effort to communicate with those people who now reside in this area and get some input from them. I'd like to see some definite written information in terms of their thoughts on what's been proposed. Simply telling staff to go back and work for a few more months and, and we'll have a work session, listen to what they did, and then we'll do whatever I would not be content with. What is, and it's no one's fault, this room is pretty empty. This is a significant thing for this city forever. And we've agreed that this is probably going to be a twenty to thirty-year process also in the earlier discussion. And so I would hope that whatever motion we make to, to postpone making a decision on district ordinance, we would in the interim do all that's reasonable to seek information from those most affected. And I'm going to assume those that live there are most affected, although I understand we're all affected. So I would just hope that if this passes, that would be part of the spirit of what we want to do in the interim.
Thank you, Councilmember. Other council comments?
Council Hutchings? Well, I have to agree with Councilmember Carrie. I do feel that the people that are living and working in this area, that own the businesses, should be the ones that are consulted. I went to a number of the town hall meetings, and these were not people that lived or worked in this area. These were people from outside the area that loved the concept, but they didn't know how it was going to actually impact the property owner. So I think this is a very important step. Thank you.
Councilmember Chilton?
I'm just going to expand on this a little bit further. I also fully agree with that. And one idea that I would propose is maybe we take a, kind of a stacked approach on this. Let's make a concerted effort to engage people that live within this area, those that own businesses, reach out to them. And I know we had a number of public, public open houses to discuss this when we were developing the riverfront plan. But I feel like that kind of engagement process ended with the conclusion and finalization of that document. You know, it might be appropriate to consider having another public open house. So let's put one on the books for some time before the work session on the tenth. Go begin our engagement process with the people, say, you know, hey, this is turning into a big issue. There's, there's a little bit of concern here. There's also a lot of fantastic opportunity. We want your input, so let's get you to come participate in this open house, get the feedback from them, keep that rolling forward from the open house into the work session, and then from the work session a week later into the council meeting. And just give us the ability to continue to just build up this information that we have to work with and build public engagement in the process.
Other council comments? If I might pass the gavel, please?
Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Councilmember Chilton. I am supportive of this motion to postpone. And had it not been brought up by another council member, I would have been making that motion myself. As you can see from what I proposed tonight in terms of amendments, I have taken time to, to read this, think about it. And I will continue to do that. I, I think it, it needs work. It's not something we, we want to rush. And we've taken and we've broken the zone down from what it was originally proposed to this smaller area. And maybe as we look at it again, maybe we reduce the size again. So that it's not the fifty acres, but it's something smaller. And we're taking this in bits and pieces and implementing something, seeing what works, what doesn't work. And then can we take from that little. take from that little piece that we've done and that works well, so we can move it over to the next area? So anyway, I just, I do support the postponement, and I, um, hope that the work sessions that we have and the public engagement is active, active work sessions, not where we just have talking heads talking to us, but the council members are also providing feedback and suggestions on ways to incorporate. Or if you don't want to do this, then we don't waste staff time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll pass the gavel back.
And, uh, City Manager?
Thank you, um, Juan, for all of the comments and questions. And, um, uh, we, I would ask to please continue throughout this timeframe to, um, email us, and we will work on any questions, and of course, take the feedback from this, um, meeting as well. Um, we did have one open house, and all property owners were contacted, and, um, we did not hear from them, but we will have another, and we will do an outreach to them again. Um, if you, um, know of property owners, and so sometimes they don't come to open house or, you know, provide that feedback, but that do have feedback, please let us know. We'd love to talk to them one-on-one if that's how they would like to communicate. Any way that we can get more communication, we would love. Thank you.
Any other comments? Uh, seen none. The motion before us is to postpone this to a work session in February, on February 10th, 2026, with, uh, public hearing on an amended ordinance on February 24th. Ready for the vote? Madam Clerk?
Whackler?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kincaid?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
All right, the motion to postpone action on the rear front mixed-use zone, uh, ordinance is postponed until February 2026. That brings us to ordinance number two for tonight, ordinance 2025-017, amending the official zoning map to rezone the 50-acre portion of the Riverfront Development Area between the Sterling Highway and the Kena River and David Douthat Veterans Memorial Park Bridge and Bridge Street, the Riverfront Mixed Use District. We have a motion already on the floor from June. Um, ask for a report from the administration.
Thank you. Um, we would request that it also be postponed to the same timeframe, that you just postpone the other ordinance. They run together.
Thank you. And with that, I would open this up for pu-any of the public who wish to speak on ordinance 2025-017. Is there anyone who would wish to speak on this ordinance? Seeing none, no one here. Is there anyone online? All right, thank you. Um, this now is back before the council. Any councilmember comments? Councilmember McCary?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we postpone this ordinance until February 2026.
Second, then Councilmember Hutchings? Discussion on the amendment. Seeing none. Um, Madam Clerk, would you call the rule, please?
Chilson?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kincaid?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Thank you. So ordinance 2025-017 is postponed to February 2026. That brings us to ordinance 2025-023, amending the Saldana Municipal Code, sections 1710-215, 1710-400, and 1710-420 to establish an interim regulatory process for the newly annexed areas. May I have a motion to enact?
I'll make-
Thank you, Councilmember Chilson, and thank you, Councilmember Hutchings. Report from the administration, please.
Thank you, Ma-Madam Mayor. Um, I'm going to turn to Economic Development and Planning Director Linda Mitchell for this report.
Thank you. Um, through the City Manager, I do have a presentation, so you can see the changes before you. So this comes forth after recognizing that it's going to be, we have a proposed annexation before the voters in October, and so staff looked at the code itself, and the applicable code states that pretty much once it's annexed, if annexed or any annexed area, that immediately building codes and zoning code would apply. However, with any proposed annexation, there's a transition plan, and in our transition plan, it's a longer process because the first step, as identified, is updating the comprehensive plan, and therefore, after we adopt that, then we look at the zoning. The way the code is written really pushes us to a very unrealistic timeframe. So what's before you on the screen right now is the current language verbatim. So no later than 30 days after the effective date of an annexation to the city, the Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, shall recommend a zoning plan for such annexed lands to the city council. And construction of any structure or building or the establishment of any land use in the newly annexed area shall conform to the adopted zoning plan. We don't have an adopted zoning plan. We have an adopted comprehensive plan, but it's not enough to say that it's very clear and explicit on what we intend. And all those details are written in the, um, proposed annexation and the transition plan. And so to better assist if there, we were to ever have a annexation, providing really a process for the city in, at the interim for staff to decide how to go about it, a regulatory process, as well as giving the commission and council enough time to really do proper public engagement to ensure that we're not rushing through a rezone and uses within this area. And so what's before you ultimately, what you see in bold in the second half of this slide is what the new language would be, is ultimately newly annexed areas will be designated as a annexation, annexed transition zone. I didn't want to see an newly annexed area to not have a zoning designated on the zoning map, because people might assume, well, you're not showing on the map, so maybe you don't have zoning code for it. And so giving this interim annexed transition area at least guides them to the right area of the code, kind of implying that there is a standard or process for development within this area until we adopt a new zoning district or so forth, or adopt a amendment to the comprehensive plan. Furthermore, it's spilling out the fine details of what that process looks like as a city works on the comprehensive plan and proposing a new zoning, a rezone, or applying as an existing zoning. Is a two-tier development? If it's a minor development, it will be administered by the staff. So say, if it's a long muddy river and it's primary residential. If in the newly annexed area, they're building a house, that's something that staff can say is very similar, compatible, that's something that, um, staff can approve administratively. But say they propose something more high-impactful commercial and or industrial use where the surrounding area is residential, then staff would probably define it as a major development, which would then go before Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration. So it creates a two-tier process, rather than saying the code is unclear, we're not sure if it's allowed or not. This really defines that. And it talks about what's the application procedure and how to issue it. And so ultimately, this is just giving staff more time, the commission more time, and council more time to really think out where the zoning of this newly annexed area would be, and still creating a process for them to move forward with their development. Other than that, that's really the summary of this, um, code amendment, and I'm happy to answer any questions your councilmember may have. Thank you.
Um, thank you for that report. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? We're opening the public hearing, sorry. Anybody online? All right, bringing it back before council. Are there any council comments? Councilmember Whackler?
I apologize for not finishing, um, this, but to my understanding, this removes solely, this removes entirely the 30-day limit on, um, requiring a new zoning plan for, uh, annexed areas. Is there any guidance on how long it should take to create a new plan? Or can this leave them in a holding pattern indefinitely?
City Manager or Planning Director?
Thank you, Councilmember Whackler. So yes, it removes that 30-day time limit and also doesn't put us in a exact timeframe that we must do it. Um, you know, as I told the Planning and Zoning Commission, they had the same question, is ultimately, I would hope that council would have a desire to push this forward and move through it. Um, I just don't want to tie us to say we have to fi-figure it out in a year, because the question is maybe we do things in phases, maybe, you know, depending on how many areas. It's really at the discretion of council, but still creating a process in the interim.
Follow it?
Um, yeah, no, that's, it seems completely reasonable to do this and to create a plan so that we have in the interim going forward, we know exactly what's going to happen with those areas until we have a clear and established plan. And it's also, I find wonderful that once annexed areas know that they are going to be annexed, they can be involved in this process. So, um, I absolutely agree that, um, getting more time for people and residents in the area to be involved in that process is, um, is wonderful. So I approve this. Thank you.
Other guests, Mr. Councilmember Chilson?
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, just question to, uh, Director Mitchell. Um, my understanding with this, and just want a confirmation, is that i-in the absence of zoning, basically the status quo is permitted. I know we heard a lot of concerns from residents, um, back during our initial hearing, um, about the potential impacts of the city coming in and altering essentially their way of life. Um, and I know that, you know, during the discussion of any potential zoning, there's always the aspect of we have grandfathering. So I would assume that any zoning that we would implement, you know, Councilman Whackler's point, we would, one, implement in collaboration with them and develop zoning that is, you know, meets both needs of the city and those that already live there. But regardless of zoning that we come to, we would likely have grandfathering of some form, so we're not going to alter things that already exist. And even before that zoning were to be established in collaboration with the community, um, in the absence of zoning, which this would now permit for a period, uh, beyond 30 days, um, we don't really enforce any rules that are typically zoning rules. The, it's status quo for the time being. Could you speak to that, please? I know there's a lot to kind of chew on.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Chilson. So, yes, if they have, and I can elaborate a little bit more, if there's an existing use, yes, they're grandfathered in. And also, if they're under construction as well, prior to the annexation, they would also be grandfathered. We wouldn't just say, hey, just because it's not completely built out or completed project, we're going to require you to bring it up to code. There's also that as well. So as long as there's been made effort on a development plan or plans that they've done, I think the city's going to work with each landowner, depending on the situation, to honor what their use has been before or pending. And yes, they would be grandfathered in ultimately.
Excellent. And I know, I, I just really want to reiterate here on the record, because I think this is very important for any members of the public that are considering this before they go to vote this fall. Again, we have grandfathering, um, and established uses, to your point, things that are under construction, we are not going to be altering those. Uh, and then any zoning that were to come out of this process following, we can do that in collaboration with the community, and I believe wholeheartedly that would be the intent of our city administration and council, would be to fully collaborate with all members of our community and find, um, some form of zoning that is cohesive for the entire community. So, thank you.
Other councilmember comments? Councilmember Carrie?
In the five to six years that we've been working on this annexation, it'd been nice if maybe we'd come up with this as compared to a few weeks before the vote. It would be nice if the people getting ready to vote would know what's going to happen to them afterwards for sure, because we had a plan in place, as compared to, we're now going to say, oh, we will put something in place after the vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have to pass if I want to make a comment? I'm speaking to comments. Should I pass the gavel? Oh, if I might.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chilson. Um, so as part of the whole annexation petition application, one of the things that is included is a transition plan. So this is supplementing the transition plan that has been available to members of the public. Um, because that transition plan was written years ago, and things have changed, it needs to be updated. But I don't see this as deviating from anything that is in the transition plan. This is also allowing, we don't know what's going to happen October 7th, and it, it may pass, it may fail. If it passes, then the administration is prepared with a plan to move forward. If it fails, then, you know, they've, they've done their homework and they move on to the next issue. But we do have that transition plan, and in the transition plan, it does mention that all existing uses within the zones are grandfathered. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Pass the gavel back.
Count, Councilmember Chilson?
I'd also like to just, um, respond to the, the concern about us not having a plan for how we would be implementing the zoning districts in this area before they go to the vote. I get that, that might be concerning. Um, but I, I think it's more important that we show the community that we don't have a plan, because we want you to be part of the plan. Um, I think that's very critical. Um, rather than them going into this under the assumption that, okay, here is zoning regulation that's kind of dictated by, uh, a body that I had no say in electing, if I support this, I'm going to be part of the process that forms the zoning districts for what I live in. I'm going to be grandfathered in, and then for the zoning that surrounds me for future development, I had a say in that. And it's a collaborative process. I really want our community to understand that we are not coming in this from an authoritarian perspective and trying to impose our rules in this area. We want to benefit the, the community as a whole. We really want them to be part of that. So I think it's good that we don't have a plan. We want them to be part of it.
Councilmember Carrie? Did you have additional comments?
Here.
Any additional councilmember comments? Councilmember Whackler?
For the record, do we have any open seats on planning and zoning currently? Two. We have one open. Um, and just so the public can hear, I know we have a huge audience today. Um, as soon as this is annexed, anyone living in that annexed area would be able to serve on planning and zoning in that, well, in that capacity. But this empty seat, I believe, is non-resident property owner? Does that mean it could be?
Yeah.
Madam Clerk?
Through the Vice Mayor, Councilmember Whackler. So the position you just filled was, um, a position that was held by somebody who was a non-resident but a property owner. However, the person you put in that seat is a city resident. So now that seat of non-resident property owner is now kind of available. So currently, um, whether we annex or not, those folks would be able to fill that seat, because it is a non-resident if they own property in the city.
And correct me if I'm wrong, I'm going to jump in here. They don't have to be a non-resident. They can be a city resident or a non-resident. Is that correct?
Correct. The default is always that they can be a resident.
Just want to clarify, we don't have any seats where you have to be a non-resident.
Correct, correct.
So ordinance 2025-023 is back before council. Any additional comments? Hearing none, can we have the vote, please?
Carrie?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kincaid?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
On a vote of five to zero. On a vote of five to zero, ordinance twenty twenty-five zero two-three has passed the council. Moving on, ordinance twenty twenty-five zero-two-four, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by a hundred and forty-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars in the utility fund and the utility system capital improvement fund, and authorizing the city manager to execute sole source contracts to euros in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand twenty dollars for the wastewater treatment plant below or core overhaul project introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact, please? Thank you, Councilmember Hutchings. Second?
Wish to enact ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh-two-four.
Councilmember Carey seconded. May we have a report from the administration?
Thank you. As stated, as the title stated, this does appropriate the funds for the blower system. The blower system was installed in two thousand and eighteen, and four of the six cores in the system are shutting down um due to vibration. So this will correct the vibration and bring the system on online to fully functioning.
Uh, thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Is there anyone online who is there to speak? All right, this item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Councilmember Carey?
To the staff, just wondering, um, I understand a hundred and twenty-five thousand for the project. Where were the other eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars go?
Thank you. Go ahead. Thank you for the question. Um, that is a fifteen percent contingency.
Contingency, thank you.
And if not used, it will come back into the utility fund.
Thank you.
Any additional councilmember comments, questions? Seeing none, um, may we have a vote, please?
Hutchings?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kincaid?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Thank you. Ordinance twenty twenty-five zero-two-four passes on a vote of five to zero. Moving on to ordinance twenty twenty-five zero-two-five, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by forty-six thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-two cents in the general fund and forty-six thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-two cents in the debit fund for debt service on the fieldhouse bond anticipation note introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Thank you, councilmember.
I move to enact ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero-two-five.
And Councilmember Carey has seconded. May I have a report from the administration?
Thank you. This is the first um payment on the bond anticipation note. And um as a reminder, the int- bond anticipation note is with Northland Bank. It is our short-term financing. And we will close out that short-term financing once the fieldhouse is completed. And then we will um issue the next tranche of the bond, which would be an additional five million. The short-term loan allows us to know the exact amount of the bond that we will um issue at the later date.
Thank you, city manager bow. We now open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this? Seeing none here, anyone online? All right, this is now back before the council. Have any councilmember comments? Uh, seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Carey?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kincaid?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Uh, thank you. Ordinance twenty twenty-five zero-two-five passes on a five-zero vote. Moving on to ordinance twenty twenty-five zero-two-six, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by seventy-one thousand one hundred and nine dollars in the general fund due to the ratification of a new collective bargaining agreement with members of the Public Safety Employees Association introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Thank you, Councilmember Carey. Councilmember Hutchings? Mo- uh, report from the administration, please.
Thank you. Um, this ordinance appropriates the funds for the CBA, as stated, and it's due to some of the um it the negotiations that occurred, including um a two-point-five increase for the police officers and the sergeants, as well as some other um expenses. Um, I'm one of them. Um, um, I cannot get to the terminology that, oh, comp time increase. There are a couple of other um items, and this appropriates the funds.
Thank you for that report. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this ordinance? Seeing no one here, is there anyone online? All right, it's back before the council. Are there any councilmember comments? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Carey?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kincaid?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Uh, thank you. Ordinance twenty twenty-five zero-two-six passes on a five-zero vote. Moving on to ordinance twenty twenty-five zero-two-seven, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by three thousand two hundred dollars in the general fund for a donate- for a donation received from the Saldana Library Friends introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Thank you, Councilmember Hutchings. And Councilmember Carey, second. Report from the administration?
Thank you. This, as stated, will appropriate the funds, and the funds will be used for a story walk program, So Fun at the Library, and one thousand books before kindergarten. And there will be a presenter for the library's creative aging program and fifteen hundred dollars for the twenty-twenty-six summer reading programs.
Uh, thank, thank you for that report. Uh, we'll now open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this ordinance? Seeing none, anyone online? Thank you. This is now back before the council. Any council comments? Seeing none, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Chilton?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kincaid?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
On a five-zero vote, ordinance twenty twenty-five zero-two-seven passes the city council. And our last ordinance for public hearing tonight, ordinance twenty twenty-five zero-two-eight, accepting grant funds from the Washington Education Telecommunications Association and increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by seven hundred and fifty dollars in the general fund for the American Revolution Documentary Min- Mini Grant introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Thank you, Councilmember Carey. Councilmember Hutchings? Report from the administration, please.
Thank you. And I'm going to read what the librarian has stated. Um, she cannot be here this evening um because it is a new program to the library. Um, this grant will allow our library to offer a series of multi-generational programs to help connect our community with the Revolutionary War history through a mix of traditional and innovative formats, including screenings of Ken Burns' upcoming documentary about the American Revolution. And each event will promote civic learning, hi- historical empathy, and community participation, providing inclusive and enriching experiences for all ages and abilities.
Thank you, city manager. Um, now open up the public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Any members online? With that, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back before the council. Are there any councilmember comments? Seeing none, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Whackler?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Hutchings? Parker?
Yes.
Kincaid?
Yes.
You have five yes votes. And you have one more ordinance.
Oh, I I was wrong. I apologize. Uh, on a vote of five to zero, ordinance twenty twenty-five zero-two-eight passes the city council. The last ordinance, I apologize. So ordinance twenty twenty-five zero-two-nine, increasing estimated revenue and appropriations by five hundred dollars in the general fund for donation received from the Saldana Rotary Club. May I have a motion to enact? Thank you, Councilmember Hutchings.
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilmember Chilton. Report from the administration?
Thank you. The funds will be used to purchase materials and supplies for the creative aging program.
Thank you. As we age creatively. Um, we will now open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this ordinance? Seeing none, is anyone online? Okay. Seeing no one that wishes to speak on this ordinance, the public hearing's closed, and it's now back before the council. Councilmember comments? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Hutchings?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kincaid?
Yes.
Five yes votes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five zero-two-nine has passed Saldana City Council. Okay, moving on, new business. Everything under new business was on the consent agenda. It brings us to mayor and council reports. At this time, I would ask Councilmember Carey to read a proclamation on National POW MIA MIA Recognition Day on behalf of Mayor Whitney.
Thank Mayor Whitney for allowing me to do this.
Is that on?
I thank Mayor Whitney for allowing me to do this. And obviously, it's very unlikely it would have a POW or MIA here. And so the best I can do is to face our flag. Whereas United States National POW MIA Recognition Day is observed across the nation on the third Friday of September each year. This year, that date is September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five. And whereas according to the Department of Defense, more than eighty thousand American service members are missing from previous conflicts, and thirty-eight thousand are estimated to be recoverable. And whereas we acknowledge with deep respect those Americans who were held in captivity and those whose fates have never been resolved, remembering the indignities and brutalities they suffered. And whereas we recognize that the families of those courageous individuals have endured the pain of separation and the anguish of uncertainty, bearing a heavy burden as they await the return of their loved ones or seek closure and solace through the knowledge that their sacrifices are not forgotten. And whereas the National POW MIA Recognition Day serves as a solemn reminder of our duty to honor and remember all those who have served in uniform and to ensure that no one is left behind or forgotten, reaffirming our commitment to the values of loyalty, duty, and respect for those who have borne the cost of our liberty. Now therefore, on behalf of our mayor, Paul Whitney, mayor of the city of Saldana, we do hereby proclaim September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five as National POW MIA Recognition Day in the city in honor of those who became prisoners of war and those who remain missing in action, encouraging our citizens to fly the POW MIA flag as tribute dated this tenth day of September, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Whitney, and thank you to servicemen and women. That brings us to mayor's r- reports on boards and commissions. Um, and that's me. Planning and Zoning Commission had a meeting on September third. Three items of consideration that were brought up. One was, uh, at some point, there will be an ordinance before the city council to amend the code to allow the keeping of chicken hens in all residential zoning districts. And uh, the planning commission supported that. There was a, they granted a sign variance for maximum wall height for two signs for the new structure being put in um out by Division of Forestry. And then they spent a considerable amount of time talking about a conditional use permit for a deck replacement and expansion on Riverview Drive. And I was suspecting that the chickens were going to get a lot of people to come out and quack, but there were minor Were they quack too? They chirp. They chirp. Okay, chirp. Um, but that that was, there were a few people who came and and supported it, but uh, they spent more time on the conditional use permit for the deck expansion than anything. And so it was an interesting meeting, and we had the benefit of both the planning, planning director, of course, is always there, but the city manager was also in attendance. So that was the Planning and Zoning Commission, and so look for some little chickies to appear in your life in the future. Uh, takes us to the city manager's report.
Thank you. Um, I just, a couple of things. DOT announced today that they awarded a twenty-nine million dollar contract for the Spur Highway project. Um, they did not state who they awarded it to, but they did um release that. The, it states that work is scheduled spring of twenty-twenty-six with substantial completion in twenty-twenty-eight. So we'll continue to watch that um, that. And they um did refer to the BABA Buy America, Build America, Build America, Buy America program and the issues that they had with BABA in moving forward with the project. And so those issues have been resolved. Um, I did want to reiterate um the rezone ordinance and with any um, any item for that matter, um, that we really do value public comment, uh, comment and contact. And if you have any of the member of the public, please send them away. We really do want to hear from the member, members of the public on any item that they may have questions or comments. And I know that um Linda's office and her assistant have been meeting with public um as they come in to talk about how their properties within the an- proposed annexation areas would be affected. So anything in, at any time, we'd love to speak to people. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Seeing none, uh, public comment? Any members of the public who would like to speak on anything? Is there anyone online? Not with their hand raised. Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll close the public comment and bring it to council comments. And I want to welcome back Councilmember Kincaid, and I would start with you.
Hi, um, I first wanted to talk on, we were talking about a teen center in the commercial district that was talked about. And I didn't vote my vote in on that, but I wanted to say that I think it would be important to have a teen center in at least part of the city and in that district especially as it is going to be a walkable commercial district. And so I just wanted to note that as the representative of the students in the area. Um, for things going on in the area at Saldana High School, we just have different events coming up um with our homecoming this next week. So we have our annual bonfire tailgate, and we have a new three K color room that's opened up, opened up to the community that we're going to be hosting on September twentieth, the Saturday. Um, and all of our sports teams are doing well. Volleyball, football, and swimming and cross country are all going, going strong. And we're off to a good start this first month of school. That's all I have.
Again, welcome back. It's good to see you. And the clerk could clarify why you didn't have to take a oath tonight because?
Because technically, she's still in her first year, but we're going to get her an oath next time, and then the mayor can present that.
Okay. All right, uh, Councilmember Whackler?
Um, I was going to make no comment, but I was reminded that we do have the Harvest Moon Festival coming up this Saturday, the twentieth, from eleven AM to six PM at Saldana Creek Park. So I wanted to remind people that that was going on this Saturday. Um, other than that, have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carey?
Thank you. Today, a citizen who promoted discussion and education to the people and was seated before thousands of primarily young people, listening to their comments and responding before thousands of primarily young people, listening to their comments and responding to their questions that they might have to more fully understand the perspective and point of view that, uh, this individual represented was murdered. Violence cannot be an answer in this country to political dialogue and education and prompting of sharing of views. And, uh, Mr. Kirk and his poor wife and his two little girls, uh, what a tragedy. But it's a tragedy for all of us, for all of us in elected office, that a citizen would be executed for the views that he wanted to provide in terms of education and encouraging listening to others. I'm very sorry that it occurred today.
Thank you, councilmember Carey. Uh, councilmember Hutchings?
I would just like to say welcome to Jesse Ruffridge on P and Z. I think that's a great addition for us. And congratulations to Linda Mitchell for being appointed to K-PED. And hopefully we have a baby the next time we see you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chilton?
Uh, thank you. I'd just like to welcome back student representative Kincaid. Um, looking forward to working with you for this, uh, next year. Um, also, I'd just like to say, uh, thank you to this body for all the discussion that went into the consideration of our riverfront redevelopment, um, zoning. Um, there's a lot of work ahead of us, but I know that we all have the best interests for our city at heart when we get to it. So looking forward to seeing where we go with it. Uh, and then lastly, uh, preemptive congratulations to Director Mitchell because I'm not sure I will see her again before, uh, she returns. I'm going to be out at the next meeting and other than that, just, uh, have a good evening, everyone.
Uh, thank you. My council comments, um, I agree with you, councilmember Carey. It was, um, horrific to see that news this morning and whether we agree or disagree with an, an individual, um, violence and murder is not the resort. And we have, we have to agree to disagree and figure out ways to move forward. And hopefully the younger generation realizes that conflict and, and fighting and killing is, is not the way that we move forward. So anyway, our, our hearts are with the, this family. Um, I want to say, I saw on the news where the Levitt Foundation has once again extended for the next three years funding for Music in the Park. So for the next three years, um, Saldana Creek Park from June through August will have a lot of activity. And again, Campbell, welcome back. So that is the end of council comments. We do not have an exec, executive session and meeting announcements. The airport commission meeting for September 18th has been canceled. The next city council meeting will be September 24th at 6:00 p.m. And with that, at 7:51, we are adjourned.